Welcome this evening. This is Wednesday, September fifteenth. And this is a special session of the Bloomington City or Bloomington Common Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo.
Here.
Follin.
Here.
Rosenbarker.
Here.
Scambalory.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Flaherty.
Here.
Edmont Smith.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
And Sandberg.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Recording in progress.
Okay, thank you. We're all present and iconic for. We will now move on to the agenda summation. We have legislation for second readings and resolutions, none of which were considered by council committee. Also, please note that each ordinance listed below has been previously amended at the council's May nineteenth, twenty twenty-one regular session. Ordinance seventeen dash oh nine and seven and ordinance seventeen dash twelve were amended further at the August thirty-first, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one special session. At this meeting, the council may consider adoption of each ordinance as amended. Moving into the council summation. First on the agenda will be ordinance seventeen dash twelve. And this has to do with area two. An ordinance of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, annexing territory to the city of Bloomington, placing the same within the corporate boundaries thereof and making the same a part of the city of Bloomington. This is the southeast Bloomington annexation. Now, the summation that our red for ordinance. I'm sorry, let me continue. Then we'll move on to resolution twenty-one dash twenty-eight. Now, all of these summations are the same. For all resolutions, they are an updated fiscal plan and policy resolution for annexing contiguous territory to the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, South. And the first one is southwest A annexation area. Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-nine has to do with the southwest B Bloomington annexation area. Resolution twenty-one dash thirty has to do with southwest C Bloomington annex area. Resolution twenty-one dash thirty-one has to do with southeast Bloomington annexation area. Resolution twenty-one dash thirty-two has to do with the North Island Bloomington annexation area. Resolution twenty-one dash thirty-three has to do with Central Island Bloomington annexation area. Resolution twenty-one dash thirty-four has to do with the South Island Bloomington annexation area. Then we'll move on to the ordinances. And the summation for each of those are an ordinance of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, annexing territory to the city of Bloomington, placing the same within the corporate boundaries thereof and making the same a part of the city of Bloomington. Ordinate seventeen dash oh nine, it's area one A. And it has to do with southwest A Bloomington annexation. Ordinate seventeen dash ten is area one B. And it has to do with the southwest B Bloomington annexation. Or it's seventeen dash twelve, it's area one C. And it has to do with the southwest C Bloomington annexation. Ordinate seventeen dash thirteen is area three. And it has to do with the North Island Bloomington annexation. Ordinate seventeen dash fourteen, area four has to do with the Central Island Bloomington annexation. Ordinate seventeen dash fifteen, area five has to do with the South Island Bloomington annexation. And ordinance seventeen dash seventeen, area seven has to do with North Bloomington annexation area, North Bloomington annexation. Then we will move to matters of council schedule. And then we will look toward adjournment. Please note that a revised agenda was prepared and distributed ahead of tonight's meeting. The revision accounts for an amendment prepared for ordinance seventeen dash twelve that if adopted would affect the ability of the council to consider and adopt the items of legislation on tonight's agenda. Because of this, I've revised the agenda to allow consideration of ordinance seventeen dash twelve to begin at the start of the meeting for the purpose of considering amendment zero eight there too. Once ordinance seventeen tw- dash twelve has been introduced and a motion has been made to adopt it, I'd like to invite the sponsors of the amendment to move the amendment. If the amendment is adopted, the council should then consider a motion to recess the special session until a later date. If the amendment fails, then I will suggest that ordinance seventeen dash twelve be laid on the table and taken up later in the agenda after ordinance seventeen dash eleven. Because each of the seven resolutions relates to the same combined fiscal plan, the council may wish to structure this discussion on the resolutions to avoid duplicative comments and limit debate. Please recall that Bloomington Municipal Code two point oh four point one two oh provides for the council to adopt a motion to limit debate by a two-thirds majority of the council before the deliberations begin. However, you may limit debate later in the meeting if you wish by merely adopting a motion to suspend the rules, which also requires a two-thirds majority to pass. Assuming that you wish to start discussion of the resolution with a vote on a motion to structure debate, please do so prior to consideration of the first resolution under legislation for second readings and resolutions.
Mr.
There are seven. Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yes, sir. That's right, Mr. Lucas.
I don't know if you wanted to offer the sponsors of amendment eight an opportunity to introduce that before moving to the resolutions.
I do. Okay, do we need to start at the beginning of the agenda with ordinance? Introducing ordinance seventeen dash well. Okay, Councilmember Flaherty.
Yeah, Mr. President, I would like to move that ordinance seventeen dash twelve be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Let me try that again. Councilmember Follin.
Yes.
Rosenbarker.
Yes.
Scambalory.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Flaherty.
Yes.
Edmont Smith.
Yes.
Ed.
Yes.
Sandberg.
Yes.
And Rallo.
Yes.
Thank you. It has been moved to second that ordinance seventeen dash twelve be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Yes, ordinance seventeen twelve, an ordinance of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, annexing territory to the city of Bloomington, placing the same within the corporate boundaries thereof and making the same a part of the city of Bloomington, southeast Bloomington annexation. The synopsis is as follows. Upon adoption, this ordinance would take various steps necessary for the annexation of the southeast Bloomington annexation area, which is depicted in exhibit A and attached to this ordinance. In the course of proposing the annexation of this area, the city prepared a written fiscal plan for the municipal annexation that describes the proposed provision of both non-capital and capital services to the annexation territory and was initially adopted via resolution seventeen nineteen and amended via resolution twenty-one twelve. The approval of further amendment to the written fiscal plan is scheduled for consideration at a common council session in September fifteen, twenty twenty-one, when the common council will consider adoption of the proposed annexation. I'm not certain if you would like me to read the additional notes with the synopsis as well.
I'll defer to our parliamentarian or Mr. Lucas.
I would lean towards that, yes, as a, just for the benefit of the public and council members.
Okay. Note on the amendments which have been incorporated into ordinance seventeen twelve at the May nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, a regular session, the council adopted amendment one to ordinance seventeen twelve, which changed various state references and signature lines to bring the proposed ordinance forward to twenty twenty-one so that it could properly, so it could be properly considered by the common council. At the August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one special session, the council adopted the following amendments. Amendments two and three, which removed identified parcels from the southeast Bloomington annexation area. Amendment five, which added an impoundment fund and corresponding advisory board for southeast Bloomington annexation area.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty.
Move that ordinance seventeen dash twelve be adopted.
Again.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded for adoption. Will those amendment sponsors care to make a motion to introduce your amendment?
I'll move that amendment eight be made to seventeen twelve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded to introduce amendment oh eight. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. President.
I'm sorry.
We can go straight into presentation because the vote on this one will be a vote to adopt or not. Or have a motion.
Fantastic. No, no, you're fine. Thank you very, very much. Okay, will the sponsors care to present?
I'll go first and then perhaps I'll ask Mr. Rallo if he has any further, further comments to add. I come before you to ask you to support amendment eight, which removes Heritage Woods' parcels in area two and directs the city to begin a separate process to add Cedar Crest neighborhood via the annexation process. Tonight, we'll hear from speakers from Heritage Woods. And they will spell out why they should not be annexed. They're not urban. Land's not developable. There are no ongoing projects. There was not a plan for development. Sewers are nearly impossible. Sidewalks are highly unlikely due to the configuration of the land. They, they do receive city water. I asked my colleagues to consider what benefits, what equitable benefits Heritage Woods will receive from annexation. According to state law, annexation must include terms and conditions fairly calculated to make annexation equitable to the property owners and the residents of the municipality. You know, what are these equitable provisions for the future management and improvement of the annexed territory? And for the rendering of the needed services? Heritage Woods will pay taxes. And when they will receive sewers, sidewalks, road improvements related to road standards, police services, will it be in the next year? Two years or three years? It's hard to tell. What are the terms and conditions in the proposal? Are they spelled out? Do they seem equitable to you? You think they have been fairly calculated? Additionally, to my colleagues, we're not only annexing people who will not receive an equitable exchange for being annexed, but they're being annexed, you know, without being able to vote for the representatives. I'm not sure that seems right. Thank you. I urge you to support the amendment and the residents of Heritage Woods. Mr. Rallo, would you like to add anything to that?
Well, just to say that, you know, the merits of this were obscured last time, the last time we debated it because of the problem of contingency. And there was no way to address Heritage Woods independently with also, without also including the neighborhood to the north. And as my colleague, Councilmember Smith said, you know, in addition to their clear lack of likelihood of getting sewers, they, they, they haven't signed waivers. They, they, they won't get sewer because of topography or constraints. It seems they're quite near unanimous in their opposition to annexation. And it is very different than the neighborhood to the north, which is, have already signed waivers. So this amendment provides a mechanism to initially remove both areas and then come back when the administration has worked on a new process for considering the annexation of the properties to the north. So it would require a little bit more time, but I think it's the, the best way forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Did you say there was someone else to speak on this on behalf?
I did not. I just meant.
You didn't?
Mr. Rallo. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. And before we move forward, I'd like to provide an opportunity for administration to share with us their thoughts on this amendment oh eight. Hi, Mr. Rooker.
Hi, President Sims. Thank you for the opportunity.
I say merit.
Sorry, Mr. Rooker, but I don't, I won't say much now. I just want to say there are more general comments that I'll look forward to giving you in just a few minutes, but encourage and appreciate Mike Rooker explaining the, some of the issues with the timing and the, and the approach of this and appreciate Mr. Rooker doing that. And I'll come back and with some more general comments in a few minutes. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Rooker. Please proceed.
Thank you. My apologies, Mayor Hamilton. I'm going to confine my comments just to amendment eight here to ordinance seventeen dash twelve. My name is Michael Rooker. I'm the city attorney for the city of Bloomington. Amendment eight is not a new amendment. It is no different from amendment four, which was already considered, discussed at length and voted down by the council on August thirty-first. The only difference between this amendment and amendment four is the addition of section two to the amendment, which is simply a non-binding request for the administration to consider starting a separate involuntary annexation of the Cedar Springs neighborhood all by itself. But that does not transform amendment eight into an original amendment. Amendment eight remains identical to amendment four in legal substance and in what it would remove from area two. Because amendment eight affects the maps in the fiscal plan, as you heard President Sims say a moment ago, passing it will necessitate postponing nearly all of the remaining business the council has scheduled for tonight. At this late stage in the process, further substantive amendments to the annexation ordinances create a number of logistical complications. After discussing amendment deadlines at length during various prior meetings with the council, staff reasonably requested that council members submit all substantive amendments for review no later than August twenty-fourth so that they could be carefully and thoughtfully examined. Adhering to that deadline, the members of this body discussed a number of amendments with staff. Some of your ideas were formally introduced as amendments on August thirty-first, and some of those were passed, and others were not introduced. The timeline for amendments was carefully selected to make certain we would not be put in a difficult position time-wise. And to your credit, the members of this body worked very hard with staff within this agreed-upon timeframe. Amendments change the fiscal plan or change the plan, the annexation plan in significant ways. And I'd like to give a council, the council a sense of all of the activity that was generated as a consequence of the amendments that were passed on August thirty-first. First off, after that meeting, staff was required to update the legislation for tonight and all the associated naps to reflect the newly modified annexation boundaries. Second, we engaged back and forth multiple times with our surveyor, who wrote legal descriptions and then rewrote them after discussions with staff about the precise location of the newly modified boundaries. We finalized these legal descriptions and they're included in your packet tonight. Third, staff created and reviewed a brand-new mailing list for annexation notices, which was then sent to a consultant for further review to be forwarded along to the company that will mail out the final set of post-adoption and annexation notices. And finally, and most importantly, Reedy Financial Group, outside council, in-house council, and the control, controller, excuse me, revised, reviewed, and then revised again and again, the final version of the required fiscal plan, which is hundreds of pages long, based on the August thirty-first amendments adopted by this council. Multiple meetings and many hours were spent making certain that the fiscal plan was in order following the council's August thirty-first amendments. This has been our primary project for the last two weeks, adjusting all of these annexation items based on the council's August thirty-first amendments. The necessity of this follow-up work is why the administration requested that the final amendments be proposed by August twenty-fourth. And the meeting was held on the thirty-first and were in order for us to complete the required adjustments by tonight. All of these tasks will need to be redone if the council takes action on amendment eight at this late stage. Here we are reconsidering an amendment that was voted down on August thirty-first, and in the intervening weeks, nothing has changed. I do want to, I do want to be very direct with the council. If amendment eight passes, is it possible for staff and our consultants to make all the necessary adjustments to this proposal before we reach our statutory time limit for council to vote on the ordinances? We think it probably is. But will such adjustments need to be done in a time-pressured environment? Exactly the sort of environment that increases the probability of sloppiness and mistakes? Absolutely. Revisiting the final annexation proposal at this late date will also cost additional money. And it will also mean that staff must further delay work on the many other non-annexation-related initiatives that both the administration and this council would like to see move forward during the next few weeks and months. As we did on August thirty-first, I can again briefly go over the substance of reasons that we oppose amendment eight, which mirror the reasons we opposed amendment four, which is in fact the same amendment. First, Heritage Woods residents are already receiving municipal utility services. They are not using wells. They are not using cisterns, but they are receiving water service from the city of Bloomington Utilities Department. Second, there's only one way out of Heritage Woods, and that leads directly into the city. Residents leaving the neighborhood enter the city of Bloomington the instant they turn onto State Road four forty-six, whether they turn north or south. In this way, Heritage Woods is appreciably different from Edgewood Hills, which is a neighborhood that the council removed on August thirty-first. For Edgewood Hills, the only exit is still a decent distance from the city's municipal boundary. An amendment eight does not solve the problem of Cedar Springs. While amendment eight includes a sentence that suggests that city staff simply start a new involuntary annexation process for Cedar Springs alone, the amendment very much fails to appreciate the time and cost associated with that task. A new annexation of this type is, at a very minimum, a two-hundred-and-ten-day process. It requires hundreds of certified mailings, both to the residents who will potentially be annexed and to adjacent residents who will not be annexed. It involves a minimum of six outreach program meetings, a public hearing, and numerous informal discussions with both residents and other impacted government entities. Starting a new annexation would involve crafting the sort of fiscal plan you all see included in your packet tonight. And although it would be smaller, because this one is very large, it would still require a meeting with every department head and writing a new fiscal plan narrative with each of them, and then having Reedy or another financial consultant do a complete fiscal analysis. Now, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the council and point out to the community at large who are present how much thoughtful work this council has already done with this annexation proposal. The original annexation proposal brought forward by the administration comprised nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-one acres. Since that initial proposal, this body has spent hours evaluating the areas, listening to the community, and determining the best way to approach this annexation. The council removed area six several years ago. Portions of area one A and area two have been removed. Tonight, if the council removes area seven, an action that we anticipate and an action that the administration supports, the annexation area will be reduced to eight thousand one hundred and fifty-three acres. That's a seventeen percent reduction in the total annexation area, and that's not a small amount. I think it speaks to the very thoughtful, deliberate approach that this body has taken from the beginning of this process. And up to this point, it's an approach that's been within the agreed-upon timeframe for changes. But the administration strongly discourages the council from adopting any further substantive amendments at this very late stage. And that includes amendment eight, which was previously considered and voted down by this body. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rooker. Now, we will go to council members, I believe, as proper for questions to sponsors and or administration. Okay. No questions, first round questions for staff or the sponsors. Okay, see none. We will now go to the public. For public comment on amendment oh eight of ordinance seventeen dash twelve. Mr. Lucas, have we discussed earlier about a time limit?
I don't believe so.
Well, no, it's fine. I only see one person, and I think as we see more hands and we may adjust. I will remind the public, if anyone wishes to speak to amendment oh eight on this ordinance seventeen dash twelve, please indicate by using the raised hand function in Zoom. I believe you could reach that either through the participants button, the reactions button, or the more button. You can also access those via phone by using star nine. Or you could send our meeting host a a note through chat indicating that your desire to speak. I will repeat, folks, this is for amendment oh eight of ordinance seventeen dash twelve. And not to be redundant, this has some, well, that's all I need to say about that. Okay, Mr. Lucas, I see. Bye.
Well, requests to comment coming in through individually used in the same device. Please let us know when you, that would like to speak, vice. Mr. President, did you want to?
Well, I just want to say, is it proper for me to say that with, if there's no objections, I'd like to limit these comments to three minutes, public comments to three minutes? Okay, I see no objections. Okay, we have Mr. Lucas. Now, remind our public that they have three minutes. Thank you.
First is Bart Farrell.
Hi, this is Bart Farrell, Heritage Woods. I consider this a revised amendment that I hope you will all support. It removes your concerns with contingency to the land parcels to the north and south of us that was a sticking point previously. Hopefully, some of you have reconsidered your rationale for opposing amendment four from the last meeting. As far back as twenty seventeen, we have told you we oppose annexation. You have heard and read our justifications in our legal document, talking papers, emails, phone calls, and in council meeting commentary. We do not meet the requirements to be annexed per state code and statutes. The city has failed to meet their obligations under these same codes and statutes. These are not guidelines. These are not arbitrary. The city cannot pick and choose which ones apply and which ones don't. Annexing us provides absolutely no value added to the city except for being a potential revenue source. No opportunity for growth, expansion, or development exists nor is created by annexing Heritage Woods. Every service and benefit promised by the city is a step back for us, negatively impacts our privately-owned road, our livelihood, and our quality of life. If you oppose this amendment but have not taken the time to visit our road and talk with any of its residents, I respectfully request you abstain from voting on this amendment. It would not be fair or proper to cast a vote on something that will so significantly impact the lives of so many families without having done your due diligence beforehand. Lastly, in view of all the misinformation provided by the city, the city's lack of transparency on annexation, the impact of COVID on this process, the voting question regarding taxes and when we can vote, the police funding controversy that is still ongoing, et cetera, et cetera. Regardless of the outcome of the vote on this amendment, the city council should absolutely delay vote on this annexation ordinance. It is the right thing to do. Regardless of the timing, regardless of the effort put into date, if it is not done right, it needs to be corrected and fixed before moving forward. As I said, it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Farrell. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Dan Fitzsimmons.
Hi, hi, yes, my name's Dan Fitzsimmons. I live on Heritage Woods Road, and I would like to speak in support of amendment eight. I very much agree with everything Bart had said. In addition, I also have concerns about city ordinances being incompatible with the environmental demands of a wooded street. Heritage Woods has moved into the city inventory for requirements for dead, near-dead trees. Removal of these trees from the, the street border could become extremely expensive. Simply walk up and down our street and you will see front yards with dead trees, dying trees. Not deadly trees, but you know, they are, they are boarding the road. These are important for woodland, forest, and fauna who thrive on these types of environments. We also have meadowed areas. We also have meadowed areas which could uh, be uh, endangered, certainly by the Sycamore Land Trust. If you look at, at their front yard, it is a large grassy area. Many parts of my yard certainly cannot be trimmed from quote unquote noxious weeds. Um, so I do have concerns about whether or not the city uh, environmental ordinances would be compatible with our road. Uh, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is the screen named Ted's iPhone.
Hi, this is Ted Oxner. And I thank you, the members of the city council and Mayor Hamilton, for allowing me to speak. I'm a resident of Sterling Woods, an area which barely touches the present Bloomington city limits. Dangling by a thread from the southeastern tip of that boundary. This is in Area Two of the lands which your mayor wishes to annex against our heartiest objections. Please note that the obvious gerrymandering which was used to include us as potential annexees.
Mr. Chair and and uh, sir, sorry to interrupt. Uh, this is for comments on Amendment Eight only, and I wanted to make sure that we're staying within that, that um, that process as, as a matter of, of procedure and order. Uh, if the comment is specific to, to Area Two in the Sterling Woods neighborhood, uh, the appropriate time would be uh, when we consider Ordinance Seventeen Twelve's adoption. Um, regardless of the outcome of this amendment. I hope that clarifies, and I don't mean to, to overstep.
I, I am not sure that I am talking only about Sterling Woods. Have you heard the rest of?
I have not, and that's why I apologize if it was preemptive. I'm gonna be happy to give you an extra forty-five seconds at the end if you're speaking directly to Amendment Eight. Thank you, sir.
Well, fifty-one of the fifty-two owners of the parcels in Sterling Woods have signed parcel-specific petitions to remonstrate. If you choose tonight to allow this proposal to advance to the next stage. Your vote tonight to abandon this proposal would allow the seething anger of the residents involved to subside and allow good spirited cooperation between city and county to be at least partially restored. We have searched in vain to find any benefits to us if annexed. Public transit would not come to us. Trash pickup is already provided in a superior fashion to that provided by Bloomington, based upon individual contracts. The sheriff's department provides service which is superior to that which could be performed by the Bloomington police who are already stretched beyond their limits. There was little or no consultation with or notification provided to the county residents of this entire annexation area when the matter originally surfaced in two thousand seventeen. I know of only one council member, Isabel Piedmont Smith, who attempted to meet with some of our residents in Sterling Woods. If annexation were to succeed, the voter rolls in the city will be rather dramatically increased by angry citizens who, when allowed to vote in two thousand twenty-four, will remember who supported this hostile takeover by the mayor and those who have spoken for it. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Sorry about the confusion at the beginning. Thank you. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Stephanie Powers.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us on tonight. I just want to say that we're opposed to the, to the annexation. My husband, Kerry, and I have lived on Heritage Woods Road for over twenty-five years and have enjoyed our private wooded road. All the owners purchased properties on this road, knowing that we um, supported um, private care of the road. And have done a very good job. We also know that we have to take care of the environment with our, our care of the septic systems that we have. We do have private trash removal. We wouldn't benefit um, in any way from the city annexation. Um, and as far as us pulling out onto the city roads or the uh, county highway four forty-six. I mean, we still, uh, still support the city by um, going to stores and um, supporting the city community. We're very good neighbors, and I strongly oppose this annexation for our street. Thank you.
Thank you. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next.
Um, thank you for taking the time to read the emails we have all written to you and to listen to our comments tonight. My name is Kathy McManus, and I live on Heritage Woods Road. I've lived here for twenty-six years, and I love the rural feel of the road. Our area is actually designated as being rural and not urban. And less than six percent of the parcels on our road are under an acre. Our road is owned by the Heritage Woods Road Association, a nonprofit organization. It's not up to city or county standards. The homeowners on the road have always paid for snow plowing, paving, and road maintenance by paying dues and special assessments to the road association. The residents of the road have opposed annexations since two thousand seventeen. We have not signed any waivers saying we would remonstrate. Would not remonstrate, sorry. I'd like to encourage you to vote in favor of Amendment Eight to exempt Heritage Woods Road from Area Two. Our demographics are in no way similar to other area, and other neighborhoods in the Area Two. If you oppose the amendment to exempt Heritage Woods Road from Area Two, but have not taken the time to visit our road or meet with any of its residents. I request that you abstain from voting at this time until you can see what the properties on our road are like. Many of my neighbors and I have written to you asking that you consider exempting our road from annexation. Given the feedback you've received since the annexation process resumed and the comments you've heard. I believe delaying the vote on this annexation ordinance is appropriate. Thanks again for listening to our comments.
And thank you for your contribution this evening. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Jonah Capio. And I believe there are two individuals that would like to comment, Jonah and Roy Capio. They shouldn't be able to unmute.
All right, thank you very much. My name is Jonah Capio, and I live at forty-nine seventy-two East Heritage Woods Road. And I ask for supportive Amendment Eight, because we are in no way similar to Cedar Springs or any other area. I'd like to speak to the history, the heritage, and the character of our road, because it seems like we are seen as only a line on a very big map. Heritage Woods Roads was established in nineteen sixty-one as a five oh one C three private road. We've never had county services. In nineteen sixty-one, there was no Lake Monroe and no college mall shopping area. This was a country, this was a country road miles from the city. Our road was established as a rural forested dead end ridge road, surrounded and locked in by deep ravines and salt creek tributaries. Our properties are big. They range from one to twelve acres. We do not meet Indiana state urban density minimums for annexation. Homeowners live here because of the character of the road. Large forested lots, no streetlights, no sidewalks or curbs, no through traffic, just quiet simplicity. If we had wanted parcel lots, sewer sidewalk, streetlights, and urban amenities, we would have bought homes elsewhere. One brilliant early homeowner was Lee Caldwell. He built his home on twelve acres in the middle of our road. Dr. Caldwell was an IU professor and a protector of the environment. He wrote the articles that Nixon used to establish the US EPA, which promotes environmental stewardship. Caldwell dedicated his home and property here to Sycamore Land Trust, because their mission is to preserve the character of this area and of southern Indiana. We are surrounded by almost fifty acres of SLT property. It seems that the city considers themselves an environmental champion. Examples include being a tree city and having large parks and recreation department whose mission is to preserve parks, greenways, and trails. Given the city's own vision as being environmentally conscious, we ask that the city recognize and preserve our unique history and character by exempting us from the city annexation and the resulting imposition of city property ordinances and urban upgrades that we do not need and we do not want. I really appreciate your time. Here's my husband.
Thank you. My name is Roy Capio. I have been a resident of East Heritage Woods Road for over nine years. I belong to a chartered not-for-profit private road association that has never experienced any county or city services, excluding water, for over sixty years. Our topographical landscape characteristics are almost identical to Edgewood Hill subdivision. And our population density numbers are lower than Edgewood Hills, which the city council recently voted not to annex. We are physically inaccessible to all other adjacent subdivisions and commercial development, namely gently convalescent care facility. And only share in our use of State Road four four six as our only easement to Heritage Woods. There are practically no other areas in Bloomington that are remotely similar to, similar to our community. We enjoy the presence of the Sycamore Land Trust headquarters as one of our residents, which managed fifty acres of wooded trails and a wildlife refuge, refuge. Located adjacent to a number of the Heritage Woods properties. This entire area is currently zoned rural and has no more available underdeveloped property for future expansion. Finally, we experience a very special and unique lifestyle that all of our residents would like to protect into the future. And we continue to demonstrate our willingness to manage and maintain our road and provide ongoing private garbage and snow removal services that have enabled us to continue our tradition for over sixty years. Thank you to the members of the city council for your time and your consideration of our amendment.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Capio. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Karen Pitkin.
My name's Karen Pitkin, and I live at five oh two five East Heritage Woods Road. I am speaking in support of Amendment Eight and hope that you'll give it consideration. I appreciate the concerns raised by uh, Mike Rauker uh, that the city would incur a number of inconveniences and expenses in order to um, move forward if you adopt this amendment. But without adopting it, Heritage Woods is simply being sacrificed in order for the city to get Cedar Springs or Cedar Crest. We have nothing in common with those neighborhoods. When my family moved to our three point five acre property on Heritage Woods over fourteen years ago, it was because of its rural setting. No sidewalks, no streetlights. Our lots adjoin Edgewood Hills, the neighborhood you recently voted to remove from Area Two, and the reasons are mirrored in our written protests. Heritage Woods is just shy of a mile long with only thirty-nine homeowners. It's a privately owned dead end road, not maintained by the county. It's got a narrow roadbed which requires large trucks and vehicles to be backed out. We've contracted with refuse haulers who use smaller vehicles for trash pickup. During the two thousand seventeen annexation meetings, we were advised that be, for these reasons, the city would not provide any services to us, and it was just two weeks ago that we were told, oh, yes, that they would provide those services. We can only imagine how low on the tonne pole we would be for maintenance and plowing with over a mile of road surface and so few residents. We have one point five six persons per acre, well short of the required three per acre that's set up by the Indian annexation requirements. We are also very concerned about the road's surface that would be challenged by the larger city trash trucks and plows. For all of these reasons and many more outlined in the documents we've provided to the city from the Heritage Woods Road Association, we request that you remove Heritage Woods from Area Two at this time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is Dwight's iPhone.
This is Dwight Stauffer. I live on East Heritage Woods Road, and I live directly across this road from the Sycamore Land Trust, and I have been here for over forty years. Keith Caldwell, Lynton Caldwell, professor that began the School of Public and Environmental Affairs here at Indiana University. Had a wildlife refuge in his property across the street from me. It's a virtual park that is shared with the entire neighborhood, the entire community and, community and with the city of Bloomington. I knew Keith Caldwell very well, and many times would drive him over to our home when we were founding Wild Care Wildlife Rehabilitation Center out by the airport in Alexander Electric. I worked closely with Mr. Caldwell, Keith, and many times would bring him over to see fawns in our garage. Iglets that had fallen from nests down at Lake Monroe, and he participated in our wildlife rehabilitation. On Keith's land is one of the few remaining natural prairie areas in the state of Indiana that he has maintained. Each spring, I would go with Keith and we would burn that territory with an open fire to release wildflower seeds so they would germinate and grow again. If we are annexed into the city, spaces like that, that are natural green spaces and forested areas will not fit in with the city's ordinances of no open fires and no wild uh, uh, material growing that might be invasive. Mr. Caldwell loved that area, and as mentioned by Dan Fitzsimmons earlier. He was the person who came up with Environmental Protection Agency laws and regulations under the Nixon administration. I knew him well. He would be appalled to think that his territory, his beautiful donation to the state and the city would be assumed into the city as just another street. I want you to oppose this annexation amendment of Heritage Woods Road. And as you all know, I have, have been very vocal about the entire annexation process in general. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next is the email address M E C O Penn at IU dot edu.
Hello, this is Melanie Pennington and Jeremy Pennington. Thank you so much. We live uh, four six six one East Heritage Woods Road. I'm gonna speak briefly, and Jeremy is also going to speak. Thank you for just taking the time to address this one more time. I just wanna reiterate that all of my neighbors have been working really tirelessly, tirelessly to um, bring all of our concerns to your uh, attention for months and months. So I appreciate my neighbor's work, and I also appreciate that you are, one more time, considering um, pausing this annexation. I really just wanna reiterate everything my neighbors have said. I could not agree more. We moved to this neighborhood four years ago and have thoroughly enjoyed the rural environment. And would be heartbroken to have things like sidewalks and streetlights added to the environment and limit the wildlife. Um, so thank you so much for your consideration, and my neighbor said better than I did.
Uh, hi, Jeremy Pennington, uh, also four six six one East Heritage Woods Road, uh, also opposed to annexation. Uh, we appreciate the time to address this. Like my wife said, uh, we have been trying to address this for months. Uh, we've given it our best effort. We are sorry that it is happening now again at this late hour. And um, while that's inconvenient for the plans of the city, that doesn't justify an inappropriate annexation of our street, um, which as, as I won't reiterate the reasons, but as, as other people have detailed. It in no way uh, fits the profile of uh, uh, an ideal annexation target. We do receive city water, that is true. That's the only service we receive currently, and I think in the future, that's the only service we would realistically receive. Uh, it's hard for me to understand in the abstract why we would su- support this um, just on the basis of services. Uh, this is not a fair exchange. This is simply a grab at property and tax base um, without any uh, uh, recompense in, in our direction. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Uh, Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone else or anyone on chat?
No, I believe that's it.
Okay, um, we'll give it just a second before we go to council questions and or final comments. Okay, uh, Mr. Lucas seeing none, can you confirm?
I, I don't see any additional comment this time.
Thank you very much. Then we will now move to council final comment or core questions on Amendment Eight of Ordinance Seventeen. or core questions on Amendment eight of ordinance seventeen dash twelve. Councilmember Volan and then councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. President. I saw Mr. Flaherty raise his hand first if he. Okay, thank you. I have several questions, but I want to concentrate first on the road brought up by Mr. Fitzsimmons and others. Is there some in the administration who can talk about what would be the outcome of Heritage Woods Road under city administration? Would it be held? I mean, I assume it would be held to a higher standard at some point when work needs to be done. Can you talk to some extent about that concern?
Sure. Michael Rooker, City Attorney. Thank you, Councilmember Volan. We are more than prepared, as we mentioned on August thirty first, to take over Heritage Woods Road and to add it to our street inventory, which means we'd maintain it, we'd plow it, we'd provide trash service up and down the road. Now, during a meeting last Wednesday with Heritage Woods folks, it was actually suggested that the residents of Heritage Woods might prefer to continue paying the necessary fees to maintain their road privately and to continue to have their own private road association. That's certainly not typical for people to prefer to pay to maintain a private road because private roads are very expensive and for most residents that expense can be really prohibitive. So we don't encounter people who can't afford or who are asking for their roads to stay private very often. We usually encounter the opposite. But of course, if the neighborhood is annexed and wants to continue to have their road privately maintained, that's fine. If instead, when they're annexed, if they're annexed, they want to dissolve their road association and cease paying fees to have the benefit of the road association, we'll happily assume responsibility for the road and accept it into our inventory. It has been inspected by both the Public Works Director and the Street Superintendent, and they're ready to assume control over it.
So the follow-up there would be, let's talk about amenities such as sidewalks or streetlights. Now, my understanding is that sidewalks are the kind of thing that are generally upon the property owner to 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 build or maintain, although we do make an effort to spend money to build sidewalks throughout the city. What about streetlights? If they don't want streetlights, is that something the city? Like, I've never thought about that before.
No, we don't. Yeah, we don't mandate installing streetlights or sidewalks in neighborhoods where they don't exist or adding streetlights or sidewalks where they don't exist and folks don't want them.
Okay, so then I guess the last part of that would be, is the road somehow not up to a standard of other roads? You know, what did staff say about it's? I mean, I guess I just don't get. Is there some kind of a grandfathering where it might need to be upgraded at a certain point? When a change happens, maybe utilities dig something up?
Yeah, that's entirely likely, but there's nothing unusual about that, you know. Both within the city and in areas that are being annexed, there are lots of roads. They were built at very drastically different time periods, so they were built to different standards. Some of them are more rural in character, some of them are more modern in character. So that's just a reality of, you know, a community like Bloomington that has grown and where annexation has happened over and over again, you know, for more than a hundred years. We accept that that's just the reality in various parts of the annexation areas, that we'll have to upgrade the roads when it's appropriate to maintain them.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Volan. Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. I don't have additional questions, so I would wait or defer if other folks had questions.
Thank you. Do we have any other first round questions? Okay, saying none. Councilmember Volan.
Yes, thank you. The other question I wanted to ask, and I'm not sure whether Mr. Rooker knows or somebody else does, but for how long has Heritage Woods Road been in the two-mile fringe or the area intended for annexation?
I do not know the answer to that, Councilmember Volan. I apologize.
I mean, can you estimate it? I mean, the AFA goes back to the mid nineties, the two-mile fringe goes back much farther than that. Do we have any sense of when?
It does, and I can't estimate it right now. I can try to find that out. I don't know how fast I'll be able to get you that information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other questions from councilmembers? Okay, I do believe we're moving into Councilmember Scambler.
Yes, thank you. And I saw Councilmember Rallo as well.
Yes, thank you.
Well, this is challenging. I think this question is directed to Mr. Rooker, perhaps to to Mr. Lucas. Outside of the annexation process, outside of the remonstrance process, is there ever a mechanism by which a city removes areas of land from within its boundaries? And how does that even work?
Thank you, Councilmember Scambler. I might have to defer to outside counsel Steve Unger on this particular question.
And there he is.
Yeah, Steve Unger, Bose McKinnon Evans, outside Annexation Council for the city. Yes, there is a there's a disannexation process outlined in a statute. It's been a while since I've done one of those, but essentially is a petition and an ordinance adoption process.
And do you know, may I follow up, Mr. President?
Yes, please.
Do we? Thank you, Mr. Unger. Do we need, do groups of properties need to be considered in the original form in which they were annexed? Or are those boundaries no longer relevant if there is a disannexation?
Yeah, I don't recall that there's a requirement in the statute that it be tied to how it was originally annexed.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo.
I had a comment. I was anticipating you were calling for comments.
Okay, I will be shortly. Thank you. Do we have any other final questions from council? Okay, I do have one and I don't know if it's for Mr. Unger or Mr. Rooker. But my question has to do with the disannexation process. Can you describe the timeframe if something were that like to be proposed?
Yeah, and I'd have to, and I apologize, I wasn't anticipating questions on the disannexation. It's probably been ten or fifteen years since I've done a disannexation. And it was actually at the request of the municipality and an adjacent municipality, and it had to do with a switch of territory. And I can't recall if it's been updated since then. I seem to recall it was probably about a six-month process to complete a disannexation at that time.
Okay, thank you very much. Ballpark, that's sufficient. Thank you very much. Okay, moving to council now for final comment on Amendment eight of ordinance seventeen dash twelve. I do believe Councilmember Rallo had his hand up.
Thank you. Well, I think that's nothing novel is happening here with this amendment insofar as we're not proposing de novo, a new area to be annexed. And I'm addressing Mr. Rooker's comments. And like the areas that we've already removed, they will have an adjusted fiscal impact that will be determined. I take issue with this idea too, that the process and deliberations of these areas should already be resolved. It minimizes the role of the council. I think it shows a certain disdain for the council's deliberative processes. It neglects that the council learns processes, fact finds, debates, and yes, may bring amendments at this time to to impact these areas. I think it's a matter of expedience that the administration is pointing to that again shows a disdain for the council. This wasn't discussed, really, the full process wasn't discussed until our last meeting. And I think the corporate council wasn't even aware, but it required querying the outside counsel, Mr. Unger, to determine if this was possible. And in finding that it was possible, we proceeded with an amendment. So I think that Mr. Rooker paints an exaggerated picture here. I think properties have already been evaluated in terms of their fiscal analysis. This should not be a complicated matter to remove this area and then include an area that already has been evaluated. So I think, again, this is an argument for expediency. And as some member of the Heritage Woods have said, this is, if it's an inappropriate annexation, and we think it is, then the council should do something about it, shouldn't just act in terms of expediency. And by the way, I find that the merits of annexing, because someone is receiving city water is spurious. Many areas of the county that were not annexing are receiving city water. So again, I think that's a false argument, but I hope you'll support the amendment. I think it's the right thing to do and I'll end there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. We're now in final comments. So we have anything else from any councilmembers? Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I appreciate again hearing the comments and perspectives of Heritage Woods Road residents. I appreciate the input we've received from them via email and public comment a few weeks ago. I have visited the road. I have spoken at length with quite a few residents, though I don't think everyone who's emailed me. There are a lot of factors that go into making the most equitable decisions we can when it comes to the annexation generally and possible amendments. I think my colleagues are trying to do that, as am I, and I hope the community members can also appreciate that that's what we're all trying to do. I mentioned last week that Heritage Woods Road, or two weeks ago, is a fairly close question for me, but on balance, I still favor including it in the Area Two annexation proposal for reasons of equity. I think all of the arguments that I have heard in terms of why residents would not like to be annexed equally apply to many other areas in many other portions of Area Two and other areas. Regarding Edgewood Hills, I do think it is relevantly and meaningfully different. I think the transportation context is significantly different. On State Road forty-six east of the city, I think the surrounding development context is meaningfully different in the way that affects my vote on annexation, which kind of comes to the difficult nature of all this. I'll just say at a sort of high level, I think areas that have had sewer service extended and have signed waivers in exchange for that, acknowledging the likely future annexation are pretty clear to me that they should be annexed. It is functionally impossible to annex only those areas due to various statutory requirements. That necessarily means that we will bring in areas that don't yet have sewer service but could get it in the future as part of any annexation proposal. So when we look at those areas that don't have sewer service, I feel the need to apply an equitable framework to those, which is what I'm trying to do when I consider Heritage Woods Road. Again, I think of Edgewood Hills as meaningfully different for some of the reasons I mentioned. And that's kind of how I've gotten to where I am with this amendment and this issue. Just to note that I had an hour-long conversation with Vic Kelson, the head of City of Bloomington Utilities, about the prospects of sewer service in Heritage Woods Road specifically. And Mr. Kelson is very knowledgeable in this field and a consummate professional. And it became pretty clear to me in that conversation that this is very much in the long-term financial and environmental interests of the Heritage Woods Road community to have sewer brought to their street, which is possible and not that much more expensive than updating septic systems, especially when you consider the long run, that over a fifty-year timeline, once they're bought into sewer, they will save a considerable amount of money and reduce environmental risk to the sensitive ecosystems that surround them. So I just wanted to note that and say that I'd be happy to continue the conversation with those neighbors about that specific issue if any of them are interested. And I'll stop there, but I'll be voting no on this amendment like I did on one a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, President. This was a hard type of a thing to think through. And I think there's a lot of the information is subject to interpretation, whether it's an equitable exchange. Do they really, you know, are these significantly different than Edgewood Hills? So we can all argue back and forth about that, but still, one of the things I think about most importantly is representing the people in the different areas that are being asked or brought in by annexation. And so I brought it back and I apologize for all the anxiety it's caused everybody at the city and Mr. Rooker and all. Had I known what I know now, I would have brought it back. I would have structured it differently a few weeks ago. So I thank everybody for entertaining this again, and I thank all the residents of the Heritage Wood area and for all my colleagues' due consideration. And I hope you all support it. And thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Pete Mon Smith.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate everybody's engagement on these difficult questions of annexation. It's a very imperfect process. It's very difficult because, of course, we are the ones to vote on it, but we do not represent the people that are affected. So it's, I am listening and reading, listening to the comments from Heritage Woods Road residents and reading the emails from residents of that road. I just don't think their fears are going to be realized. The the road is not going to change overnight into some kind of urban highway. I mean, but I don't think the residents on Heritage Woods Road will see much change in their environment. I mean, we have strong environmental protections. If that would prevent any kind of irresponsible building along that road. We are not going to swoop in and put sidewalks and streetlights down. We're not going to, you know, bulldoze people's front yards and widen the street. I mean, it's not going to substantially change, even unsubstantially. I don't really see what change is going to be made to the physical environment of this road. What they would benefit from is saving the money of maintaining that road themselves. The city will maintain it. And the city does have smaller trucks. They do have other city streets where they have to back up trucks. You know, our professionals in sanitation and the street department have inspected it and said, you know, we can handle cleaning, maintaining and removing snow from this road. So I just I'm a little baffled that people think this is going to change the character of where they live. So I also agree with Mr. Rooker that this is really the same thing as Amendment four that was already defeated. So I'm going to vote the same way that I voted on Amendment four, which is no. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pete Mon Smith. Do we have any other? Councilmember Scambler.
Yes, thank you. And my thanks as well to everyone who has wrestled with this issue. I want to acknowledge a couple of things Mr. Rooker said. He talked about the implications of this amendment passing and what that would require in terms of rethinking and reworking financial impact statements and so forth. Annexation is complex, and there are hundreds of things that need to happen in order for this very complex process. And I don't doubt for a minute that if this amendment passed, it would create a lot of work and a lot of a lot of details that need to be attended to. And for the record, to me, that's not a very compelling reason to oppose the amendment. I acknowledge it. I think it's true, but if something is a is the decision, my decisions are not based on that. They're based on what I think makes the most sense for what we're doing. So I just want to acknowledge that. I also want to acknowledge a lot of the comments from residents of Heritage Woods Road speaking about the ways in which city ordinances were not necessarily compatible with features that existed on their road. And I do hear that. I want to acknowledge that as well. The question I asked about alternatives, is there some mechanism for removing areas from within city boundaries outside of remonstrance, outside of annexation? That question's very important to me. And from what I hear from our outside council, the answer to that is yes, there is a mechanism for that. If that makes sense. So with that, like Councilmember Pete Monc Smith and others, I don't see this as substantively different than Amendment Four. My vote will be the same. So I will be opposing this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council Scambolary. Do we have any other final comments from council members on Amendment 08 or Ordinance 17-12? Councilmember Bowlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Smith made the argument that residents of the annexed areas aren't able to vote for their representatives, but that's true of everyone being annexed. At least the people affected by this amendment. If anything, part of the point of annexation, of this annexation ordinance at least, is to give them the right to vote. The power to annex has been an essential power of cities since the beginning of organized government, at least in the U.S. And yeah, I think that this has been a second chance for Heritage Woods Road to make their case. And one of the parts of the case they've made is that where they live is rural. I have a couple of thoughts to that. First, it may be rural, but it directly abuts someplace that's even more rural, which is the protected forest, where there will be no development beyond that. But there was development in this area, and there were trees cleared. The, under what rules was this area developed at the time? You know, the fact is that times change. Where's my note here? I think there's gonna, I think that the other thing about the rurality is that if if it's important that existing city zoning code isn't compatible with this area, then perhaps we need to create a new zoning type for heavily forested neighborhood bordering a state preserve or protected wilderness. But meanwhile, at least one person said there are no other areas in Bloomington similar to us. I was struck by that statement because it was an indirect acknowledgement that the residents of Heritage Woods Road see themselves as Bloomingtonians. One of the many arguments made against annexation has been that people living outside the city spend money in Bloomington and support businesses in Bloomington. They talk about themselves as being a de facto part of the Bloomington community, yet they don't want to be a de jure part of the Bloomington community. And I've always found that difficult to bear. I think that no one is arguing that Bloomington should annex Unionville or New Unionville. That the annexations are happening in places that were built very close to the city for a reason. This place, I think, has one of the strongest arguments to make an exception. But as I said with Amendment Four last time, I thought it was a very close call, like you have, as we were, as we were Flaherty said. Meanwhile, I think Heritage Woods Road does have more in common with other areas to be annexed than it thinks. It has 446 as the sole entry point. If Area Two is annexed, they'll be one of several neighborhoods to the immediate east, bordering 446 on the east that will now be part of the city. In fact, 446 from Third Street to Moore's Pike slash Lankins Ridge Road will be entirely within the city limits, and it goes even farther south than that. And, you know, that's been, that's an unusual, well, it's not unusual. It's par for the course. There are plenty of state highways that are entirely within the city. And I also think there's going to come a day when the city eventually annexes properties on either side of 46, east of 446, something I said last time. Just as people in, say, 1947 had trouble imagining the city going out as far as Eastland Plaza, Mr. Caldwell obviously didn't imagine the city might grow all the way to 446 back in the 70s. I think Edgewood Hills and the properties north of 46, bordering 46 on the north side, will eventually be annexed. Because, I mean, even though we can't imagine it now, I think we'll be able to imagine it someday soon because development happens. Will there be any more significant development here? Unlikely, but I think there's going to be more development along 446. It's better that it be controlled by a body like the City of Bloomington, which is very serious about density. Finally, if disannexation is the kind of thing that the neighborhood will pursue and council wants to entertain, we've heard that the process should take six months. This process took nine, not including the unfortunate interruption by the unconstitutional act of the State House. And we have more than two years before annexation takes effect. So I think that there would be time to consider that if that is the will of the majority. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowlin. Do we have any other final comments from council members? Okay, seeing none, are we ready for the question? And I'm seeing no further comments from the council. Will the clerk please call the roll on Amendment Eight or Ordinance 17-12?
Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarker?
No.
Scambolary?
No.
Sims?
No.
Flaherty?
No.
Pete Monc Smith?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Bowlin?
No.
Thank you. Amendment Eight of Ordinance 17-12 fails three, six, zero. Okay, thank you. And as I stated earlier, since this amendment fails, I suggest that 1712 be laid on the table and taken up later in the agenda after Ordinance 1711, which we will do unless there's no objections. Is that correct, Mr. Lucas? Okay, I see your head nodding. So trying to make sure. Okay, thank you very, very much. And thanks, everyone, for the input on that robust discussion. Thank you. And as I started earlier, inappropriately at the time, but because each of the several resolutions relates to the same combined fiscal plan, the council may wish to structure its discussion on the resolutions to avoid duplicative comments and limit debate. Please recall that Bloomington Municipal Code 2.04.120 provides for the council to adopt a motion to limit debate by a two-thirds majority of the council before the deliberations begin. However, you may later limit debate later in the meeting if you wish by merely adopting a motion to suspend the rules, which also requires a two-thirds majority to pass. Assuming that you wish to start discussion of the resolutions with a vote on a motion to structure debate, please do so prior to consideration of the first resolution under legislation for second readings and resolutions. Now, there are seven resolutions under second readings and resolutions that would adopt updated fiscal plans for the areas proposed for annexation. These resolutions are numbered Resolution 21-08 through Resolution 21-34. Because each resolution relates to a fiscal plan and policy provided as a combined document, I understand there may be a motion regarding the structure of deliberations on these resolutions tonight. Is there such a motion? Councilmember Pete Monc Smith?
Yes, I move that the council consider this package of resolutions in the following manner. First, the city administration will be given time to make a general presentation, if it wishes, regarding the fiscal plan as a whole. Second, council members may then ask general questions of the presenters regarding the fiscal plan. Each round of questioning should last no longer than three minutes per council member per round. Third, once council members have finished asking questions about the fiscal plan in general, the council will consider the resolutions one at a time as they appear on the agenda. After introduction of the resolutions, the city administration will have an opportunity to address the resolutions, and then the council may ask questions about the particular resolution, with each round of questioning lasting no longer than three minutes per council member per round. Fourth, once the council has finished receiving presentations and asking questions on all seven resolutions, then members of the public will have an opportunity to comment on the resolutions. Members of the public may speak once for up to three minutes and may speak to as many of the resolutions as they wish during that time. However, comments should pertain to one or more of the resolutions. Fifth, after the public has had an opportunity to comment, council members may ask further questions and hear further answers as necessary before making concluding comments on the resolutions. Comments should last no longer than three minutes. Finally, the council will entertain suitable motions one at a time in regard to adoption of each resolution.
Thank you, Councilmember Pete Monc Smith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. I will remind everyone that it is debatable and takes two-thirds votes to pass. Will the clerk please call the roll? I'm sorry, Councilmember Pete Monc Smith?
Yes, just for the benefit of the public, I wanted to emphasize that this is a proposed procedure to go through the resolutions. The resolutions adopt the updated fiscal plan for the different areas. That's all been combined into one fiscal plan. After we're done with those, then we come to the ordinances, which is the actual vote on annexation on the different geographic areas. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Pete Monc Smith. And I will add that this is the process by which we conducted our meeting in August as well for the resolutions. So saying that, will the clerk please call the roll on this motion to structure debate?
Yes, Councilmember Scambolary?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Pete Monc Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Bowlin? Anderson Barker?
Thank you, and that motion passes nine to zero. Mr. Lucas, is it now time to go to parliamentary for introduction, or do we move to administration for their presentation?
According to the motion just adopted, you would invite any general presentation or comments from the administration first, followed by questions of the council on that presentation before going to the resolutions.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we, or there's Mayor Hamilton. Hello, Mayor Hamilton?
Hello.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much. A very long process has brought us to tonight. I want to begin my brief remarks with just a quick news update and a word of thanks on behalf of our current city residents. We just learned today that our very hard-working Bloomington Fire Department received its second upgrade in five years of its public protection classification from the Insurance Service Office, or ISO. Learning today that the fire department received the highest possible rating of one slash one X. This makes Bloomington one of only four Indiana fire departments to receive this outstanding rating. I want to thank the council for your support of the fire department. Note that residents may enjoy lowered insurance rates as we're now at the top rating there. I should note that we believe Bloomington is the only city in the state of Indiana that is served by a fire department with an ISO rating of one and a police department with national Kalia accreditation. As you know, and with your encouragement, next year's budget will include continuing and rising investments in both of our outstanding public safety departments, including increases to the police department budget from our original proposal. So just want to share that news, good news with you. As to tonight, when I took office in January 2016, I soon learned that our city had stopped annexing any property in about 2004, despite continual significant growth in urbanization. With lots of public discussion and engagement, we began in early 2017 the process to remedy that disconnect between city boundaries on the books and city development and growth on the ground. In the middle of a very orderly and robust six-month process, public process, state interests, primarily conservative rural interests in the legislature intervened illegally in 2017 seeking to stop our annexation efforts altogether. We sued, and three and a half years later, the Indiana Supreme Court agreed with us. And in the meantime, the state legislature took two more major steps seeking to diminish the chances for an impact of annexation, dealing with existing sewer waivers and with fire territory coverage. We have carried on and will carry on as our city did for its first 185 years in appropriate and orderly annexation efforts. Tonight, as city elected officials, we, you and we, have the opportunity and duty to consider the future of our city, how to enhance it and strengthen it. And of course, doing so at the same time as we continue to collaborate energetically with our partner entities, county governments, public schools, libraries, subway district, township government, and more. Our primary focus should be how do we improve our city's future and thus our region and our partners also. Virtually all areas under consideration tonight were long planned for annexation. The two-mile fringe for planning purposes, specific areas intended for annexation, and of course, waivers reflecting sewer system extensions done explicitly in exchange for agreements to join the city proper in the future. Annexing these areas supports and reflects the basic role of our city government, providing levels of services appropriate for urbanized or urbanizing or potentially urbanizing areas. Levels of planning and sanitation and water and parks and neighborhood investments and public infrastructure of streets and sidewalks and bike lanes and paths, public transit services, regulatory oversight of housing quality, pedestrian and bicycle safety, economic development, the arts, tourism, jobs, cultural and diversity promotion, civic engagement and political engagement. It has been noted as well that annexation is not just a transaction, a commercial deal to be evaluated like a purchase and sale. Annexing these areas supports the nurturing of our communities of interest. It assures that we are including all in our community, those who are already in fact part of our community, our workplaces, our neighborhoods, our schools, our culture, including all in the community fully and fairly in our political processes and our civic life. As each of you well knows, this is a terrific city in which to live with many, many benefits of Bloomington residency. You can find an impressive list of those benefits on our website, benefits that are enjoyed by all of our residents, current and future. I want to thank you for your efforts over the past four-plus years. Tonight, with your votes, you can right-size our city, catch up on 17 years with no annexations, and in the face of serious barriers and challenges presented by state legislature, you can update our boundaries to being practical and reflective of reality on the ground. Doing so will improve services to thousands of new residents and strengthen and integrate our community for all our current and future residents and for our entire region. It will also allow us to proceed with more incremental voluntary annexations going forward as appropriate with contiguity. I want to thank you for your close attention to public comments, to tailoring the boundaries of the original proposal. Through removal, as noted, of 17% of the areas, sorry, I'm just about done. Areas six and seven removed, and recent amendments to areas 1A and 2. I sincerely appreciate your care for this process. I sincerely appreciate your care for this process and for this city. And I encourage you to adopt the remaining ordinances as they are before you tonight. Thank you for your attention and consideration. I think I'm passing it now to outside annexation counsel Steve Unger of Bose McKinnon Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel. Again, Steve Unger, Bose McKinnon Evans, outside legal counsel with respect to annexation for the city. I'll say also that other members of kind of our ongoing annexation team, including Tim Stricker, Re Financial, Philippa, Mike, and Jeff Underwood are all available as well to ask questions. But I'm just going to provide a brief overview of fiscal plan version 5.0. At the outset, I do want to say that while my comments are going to be brief, the fiscal plan itself, including in 2017 when this process started, the changes that were made in at the beginning of this year for version 4.0, and then even getting to this version 5.0 was a large undertaking and it really was a team effort. Of course, Re Financial spent quite a bit of time and energy and work in putting the plan together. But so did your administration and so did your department heads. So I will say it was a, it was a large undertaking and a team effort. Just a reminder what a fiscal plan is. It's really two things under the statute. It boils down to the city's plan for how it is going to extend services to the annexation areas. Capital services within three years, non-capital services within one year of the effective dates of the annexation. And then tries to make a, an educated estimated impact on financial impact as a result of the annexation. This plan again addresses, the city approached this, recognizing that each annexation area stands on its own. And therefore, there is a separate within the overall plan, a separate plan for each annexation area. But also recognizes that these areas are not being in a vacuum and therefore combines them all into a single plan and outlines how services can be provided to all of the areas, including the overall impact with the annexation of all of the areas. Just briefly again, some of the changes that have occurred since version 4.0, and Mike Rooker did, I think, a very good job of really highlighting a lot of the work that went into making the changes to come up with version 5.0. Of course, the boundaries have been adjusted, all of the maps have been adjusted to reflect that, including removing area seven from the fiscal plan. There's an update of the thousands of parcel lists to make sure we have the most up-to-date information in terms of property ownership. They, version 5.0 also updates the parcel tax data to reflect the 2020 Pay 21 certified data, which was not certified at the time of version 4.0, but has been certified by the DLGF since then. Also adds the impoundment funds for the additional areas 1A. One, and one being two, I believe that the council added the impoundment funds too. And so updated the impact based on those impoundment funds. And then, of course, incorporated revisions based off of all of the comments that the city has received over the course of really the summer relating to the fiscal plan and the provision of services to the annexation areas from the public, from the council, from department heads and from other government officials. And then Re Financial and the administration worked with staff to provide really a lot more detail as well in the narrative portion in terms of how services are going to be provided and updated the cost estimates. Really some fine tuning over the summer in understanding what the, what the specific costs would be to provide some of the services. Ultimately, the requirement for a fiscal plan is that the city makes a credible commitment to provide services, that it can provide services in the annexation areas within one and three years for capital and non-capital services to the annexation areas following the effective date and the manner in which they're provided to other people within the city. And I will tell you, I've worked on a lot of fiscal plans over the years and been involved in a lot of annexation. And I'm very confident that this fiscal plan, with this fiscal plan, the city has made the credible commitment that's required for these annexations. So with that, that is all for my comments for now. Thank you.
Oops, unmute myself. Thank you, Mr. Unger. And I'm assuming there's no more presentations from anyone on city administration or the mayor's office. Okay, seeing none. We now move to the point where council members may ask general questions of the presenters regarding the fiscal plan. And each round of questions shouldn't last no longer than three minutes per council member per round. Do we have any questions from council members on this administration presenter, presentation? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, Mr. Unger, you mentioned that some of the revisions incorporated into version five included some comments received over the summer about fiscal plan version four. Can you provide some more detail as to what comments led to changes? What extra comments that led to changes that were not just internal tweaking, but in response to comments from council members or members of the public or other governmental bodies?
Yes, and certainly Tim Stricker can give more detail on specific updates that were made. A couple that come to mind for me, whereas there was some questions from the County Redevelopment Commission concerning the impact on RDC funds or TIF funds. And so there's some updates to reflect that. One of the, you may recall, one of the, one of the comments from the fiscal consultant at the county engaged was that it did, that the last version of the fiscal plan included not the 2020 Pay 21 certified data. It was based, the estimated tax impact on property owners was based on the 2019 Pay 20 certified data, which was correct. But again, that data has been updated and it's available, is certified now. So Re Financial went ahead and implemented those updates to the plan as well. Those are the two specific ones that come to mind. I don't know if Tim has other, other that he can comment on.
If I may, Philippa Guthrie Corporation Council, there is another one, and it actually is an amendment that is later on the agenda. But we inadvertently included a parcel that is subject to the agreement in lieu of annexation with Cook, and that has been removed and the fiscal plan adjusted. That was another comment that came from Cook.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, go ahead, Councilmember Smith, I'm sorry.
So, so the adjustments were really kind of those major ones. There weren't like small adjustments in response to residents' concerns or Monroe County concerns or things like that.
Yes, I mean, little, little adjustments here and there. I recall we made an adjustment to clarify, for example, on a, on a private road that the city was willing to work with the owners of a private, on a private residential street to take over responsibility for this, to accept the road and take over the maintenance responsibility for that. So little things like that.
Okay, thank you. That's my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Do we have any other questions from council members of the presenters? Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, President Sims. I just was going to ask, Mr. Unger, will you define for me non-capital and capital? Is it services or I forgot what, how that's turned?
Yes, the statute gives examples, non, you know, I really think of it as capital costs are hard, more long-term costs. Street maintenance, street reconstruction, heavy street maintenance, installation of infrastructure is more your capital costs or long-term capital expenses. Your non-capital costs are police protection, for example. So within one year after the city, after the annexation is effective, the city will be responsible for taking over police protection in the annexation territories. Street plowing would be considered a non-capital service. Those types of kind of more maintenance, short-term maintenance costs and short-term provision of service are non-capital.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Unger. That was great. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions from council members of the presenters? Your hand, Councilmember Bowlin?
I was having trouble hearing all of a sudden.
Thank you. I just saw your hand move, didn't know if you were indicating.
Now I can hear you. Sorry. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions from council members to the presenters? Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I'm sorry, I was a little slow.
That's okay.
So I know that the public is very concerned with police protection. And of course, we've discussed this issue in the context of next year's budget. But could Mr. Unger or Ms. Guthrie review for us what the plans are for providing police protection to the annex areas?
Yes, maybe the best thing I could do is pull up the fiscal plan narrative, which I have here as well. Let me find the police protection area portion. Because there were, I will say, some, a lot of discussions with the police department on the provision of service here with respect to area 5.0. Looking at it just from big picture wise, version 5.0 on page 60, beginning on page 61 and into page 62, estimates, again, and I'll just say for that, all areas combined, proposes adding total, a total number of sworn officers of a minimum of 23 sworn officers to a maximum of 35. And then civilian personnel of five, basically five civilian personnel. Again, that assumes all of the annexation areas completed. And then there was, I will say, a great deal of detail that went into the department's analysis of the costs that went along with those positions, what that cost is, for example, to outfit an officer, provide him the computer with transportation. And then also included some estimated costs for additional space that would be needed to house the officers.
So since we know it takes a long time to hire police officers and get them trained, is that something that would start? As, I don't know, how soon could that start?
Well, once, once, and again, some of that can depend on at what point the city knows for certain which annexations are going to be completed or not, right? There is an opportunity for remonstrance, which could delay the city knowing when these will become effective. But I certainly expect that once we know which areas are finally going to be completed for annexation, that that planning would start pretty quickly. And that was one of the reasons that the city, one of the many reasons that the administration had proposed delaying the effective date of the annexation to give an opportunity to ramp up and plan and provide those services. But I will say the plan, the plan shows that the city can credibly pay for those services and begin providing police protection in the first year after the annexations are completed.
All enough time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Unger, and thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, Mr. Unger, and just to follow up on that. So what was the assumption of the base pay for the police officers?
That if you, and I may, maybe, if he's available to jump and pull that by, it's not here in the narrative, I'd have to go back and find it in the, in the view. I think the best I can, I don't have that answer in front of me right now at my fingertips. I believe generally across the board, and again, and if Mike knows, and again, there was discussions with the police chief in particular over the provision of service. But there is generally an assumption across the board of a 3%, inflation. So whatever the base was that we started with, they assumed inflation before the effective date of the annexation.
Okay, and the effective date is again?
January 1, 2024.
2024, and we are to add 23 to 35 officers, is that right?
That's, that is what is proposed, correct?
And an assumption of 3% per year base pay?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. Do we have any other questions of the presenters by council? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Sorry, I wanted to follow up on the police question. So does the fiscal plan presume we're going to hire police starting January 1, 2024? Which in my view would be insufficient, or hire them so that they're all trained and ready to hit the ground running on January 1, 2024?
Yeah, it proposes that they would be phased in over the first three years. The total number of officers would be phased in, again, if all of it was done in the first, in the first three years. And the city would begin, again, patrolling those areas immediately though, or within the first year of the annexation as the new officers were brought on board.
So that doesn't really answer my question. So are we planning to hire officers prior to January 1, 2024 so that they can be trained?
Yeah, I don't, Mike, do you recall? I don't know if Mike's available.
Yeah, Michael Rooker, City Attorney. So obviously, it's entirely possible that the council might anticipate that, but it's not part of the fiscal plan. The fiscal plan looks at what will happen after the annexation becomes effective. Steve, you can correct me if I'm wrong there. But of course, you know, the city, that's not till 2024. So there can be discussions between now and with the city council if that's appropriate.
So legally, the fiscal plan only has to consider expenditures effective January 1, 24?
Well, I don't think, I think that's not exactly, what the fiscal plan requires is that, again, what the statute requires is that the city begin providing services to the annexation territory, police protection service within one year. And what the fiscal plan requires is, number one, that you outline a plan for doing that, that you'll begin providing services, non-capital, so we're talking about police protection services within that timeframe. And then outlines how you expect to be able to pay for that or that you can pay for that, make a credible commitment that you, that's something ultimately that the city can pay for based off of the tax revenue that's generated from the annexation and the other adjustments that come from annexing and the tax impact. And then what the impact is on other taxing units in particular, and also to some extent property owners, but specifically on other taxing. So I think the fiscal plan does those things. It says this is what our estimate is of the additional officers that would be needed to provide services to these areas. It estimates what the costs are to provide those services in year one and really over the first four years of that annexation. And then shows that how the city would have a plan to pay for that. And so it meets all of those requirements.
Okay, my my time is up. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Councilmember Rollo. Thank you, Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Unger, just again, following on this, is the twenty three to twenty to thirty five additional officers. We currently have ninety one. We're budgeting for one hundred and five in twenty twenty two. Is that twenty three to thirty five in addition to? The one hundred and five?
Yes, yes, that's the way, and I, I want to say too, it's. You know, with with, yes, generally, that is in addition to the existing officers that you have now, that the existing staffing that you have or actual officers that you have in in position. But I want to, I want to.
You're unclear. You said, you said it's in addition to the one hundred and five, but then you said. Just now that it's in addition to the current officers that we have on staff, which is ninety one.
Yeah.
Which which is it?
This is, this is independent of the of the current officers that you have now, whether whether from a budgeting perspective or actually on staff is is what the point I'm trying to make. But again, what I, what I want to be clear on too is a fiscal plan is an estimate, right? It is an estimate of how many officers will be needed. Based off of financial projections, projections, the calls for services to that area right now. That doesn't mean that it is a automatic, there's going to be twenty three officers, or there's going to be thirty five officers. That is certainly within ultimately the discretion, the budgetary discretion of the council, the police department, hiring constraints. You know, the a discussion in how you provide police protection to an area, so. It it, and I don't mean this just with respect to Bloomington, but across the board, when you look at an annexation, there are things that can change over the next three years.
So I'm almost running out of time. So just to be clear, we had an organizational assessment that estimated for the current city area, we needed one hundred and twenty one. We have only ninety one right now, but in a way, that's. You know, okay, set that aside, but what you're saying is for the area that we're annexing, that would require an additional twenty three to thirty five. Is that correct?
That that was the projections that were provided by the by the department, correct?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rollo. Do we have any other questions of the presenters from city council? Okay. Councilmember Piedmont Smith, did you have any more? We can start another round. If that's the case. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you all seeing none. I do believe we have resolutions for second reading. Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to move that resolution twenty one dash twenty eight be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved the second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rollo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarker?
Yes.
And Scambolory?
Yes.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that resolution twenty one dash twenty eight be introduced and read by the by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Yes. Resolution twenty one twenty eight, updating resolution. Try that again, sorry. Updating resolution seventeen sixteen and twenty one oh nine. An updated fiscal plan and policy resolution for annexing contiguous territory to the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana. Southwest A Bloomington Annexation Area. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution adopts the updated fiscal plan for municipal annexation. Prepared for the annexation of the southwest A Bloomington Annexation Area depicted in exhibit A to ordinance seventeen oh nine as amended. Fiscal plan five point O is an updated version of the fiscal plan last adopted by the council on May nineteen, twenty twenty one. And outlines the proposed plans for the extension of capital and non capital services in this area.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty.
And just a reminder to, oh, I'm sorry, I was thinking we were going to introduce all the motions initially, but I think we're inviting presentation at this point. On the individual resolution and council questions, although we're saving public comment until the end. Do I have that? The structure of debate, right?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, sorry for jumping in. I was thinking I had to introduce another thing, but no, we move forward from here. Thanks.
Well, before we move forward, do we not introduce each? I thought we were going to do each and every resolution moving forward. Go ahead, Councilmember Mrs. Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, the motion that was made anticipates hearing any further presentation from the administration on the particular. Resolutions, there may not be any any further comments that they'd like to make, but if they would. Like to make further comments, they have an opportunity to do so, followed by an opportunity for council members to ask questions specifically on each resolution. Before introduction introduction of the the following resolution.
So does that mean that each resolution is moved to be adopted?
It's like. In between introduction of each resolution, you should offer an opportunity for the administration to make any specific comments. On the resolution, followed by council questions.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any administrative presentations on resolution twenty one dash twenty eight? See, Ms. Guthrie.
Yes, Philippa Guthrie, Corporation Council. We don't actually have anything specific for each resolution. They are all part of the overall fiscal plan and. We just ask that you adopt them and update the fiscal plan.
Okay, to be clear, I'm hearing that administration will have no other presentations for the rest of the resolutions.
We don't anticipate, right?
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Lucas, in that case, will council members still have an opportunity? To ask questions for each resolution?
Yes, and again, there there may not be any further questions, but a motion. Allowed for specific questions on a particular resolution if council members wish to, wish to ask those, certainly no requirement to.
Okay, thank you. Now, lastly, just to be clear, we'll go to council for any questions that they may have, and then we'll move. To adopt. After that. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I believe we'll actually move to introduction on the next resolution, so we're going to introduce them all. Consider public comment on all of them prior to moving to adoption. Does that, does that make sense? It was a complicated motion. Essentially, since we know we have no more presentation from administration. After the introduction of each of these resolutions in sequence, and they're being read by the clerk. We should double check to see if any council members have questions specific to that resolution. After we've worked through all seven, we will go to the public for comment on any or all of the resolutions and fiscal plans combined, and after that. If there are no final questions from council members, we would move to adopt each of the resolutions in sequence at that point.
Okay. We'll get through this. Thank you. Okay. So I guess the next move is for Councilmember Flaherty, or to move to.
I believe I do, we have one question, perhaps I see a hand raised, so.
Okay, Councilmember Rollo, sorry, thank you.
Well, yeah, so I'd like an answer from the administration, someone in the administration. We we had questions. Of Mr. Unger exploring. That within. These ordinances are budgeting for police, but I'm hard pressed to. Imagine that we will have. The needed police force to cover these areas, since we already have a diminished force. Police force for the current geographic area of the city of Bloomington. And case in point is the mandatory overtime that officers are now required. Do you have a response for for this? How how could we conceivably get twenty three to thirty five more officers by the end of twenty twenty four?
Councilmember Rollo, is that directed anyone specifically?
Anyone who cares to in the administration.
Thank you. Administration care to respond to Councilmember Rollo's question?
Michael Rooker, City Attorney, I see that Mayor Hamilton has has put his video on, I'll allow him to respond.
Well, I'm happy to have you, Mr. Rooker, as well. Look, what I can say is that the administration and the. Police chief and the team has seriously looked at what it will take, looked at the financial need for it. Of course, it gives us three years to do that. We'll be working with you to do that, to assure we have protection and we're confident we can do so. I I mean, the plan is is clear on the financials that will be available, and of course, there. There's work to be done. We need to know what areas we'll be in. Once we know what areas we'll be in and the timing, we'll get to work and make sure we do that, and Mr. Rooker or others if want to add, that's fine.
No, and I and I think, you know, obviously, there's been a large discussion about this, and we're going to do hiring the way we've done it. For since the beginning of time at the city of Bloomington and the way we've addressed personnel issues since the beginning of time, so we always.
If that's the case, and there's no conceivable way that you could hire them.
No, I'm I'm sorry, Mr. Councilmember Rollo, you may be misunderstanding me. What I'm saying is. Go ahead, Mayor Hamilton.
No, that's fine. You go ahead. You go ahead.
So we confront, we, this is certainly if, to the extent that you're identifying a hiring issue at the police department, that's certainly not the first time, to the extent it exists, that we've identified hiring issues, and there are all sorts of strategies for dealing with that. But what we're talking about with the fiscal plan is the number of officers that we believe would be necessary. To adequately provide service in the same manner to these, it's an estimate of the number of officers who would be necessary to provide service to these areas. Once they're annexed. So I think you're you're asking a question that's a little bit different, so.
I'm finished.
Okay, thank you. I think the time has been exhausted. Do we have any other questions before we move forward? Okay, thank you. I do believe we have more resolutions. For second reading tonight, Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, I move that resolution twenty one dash twenty nine be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Thank you. Been properly moved the second. That's a clerk, introduce and read. Be introduced or read by the clerk by titles, not as only, that was resolution twenty one dash twenty nine, where the clerk please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rollo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarker?
Yes.
Scambolory?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Where the clerk please read?
Resolution twenty one.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, I just, I was gonna do it properly. I'm so sorry. It's a big movement second that, resolution twenty one dash. Twenty nine. Be introduced, read by clerk by title and synopsis only. Now, will the clerk please read?
Yes, resolution twenty one twenty nine, updating resolution seventeen seventeen and twenty one ten. An updated fiscal plan and policy resolution for annexing contiguous territory to the city of Bloomington. Monroe County, Indiana, southwest B Bloomington Annexation Area. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution adopts the updated fiscal plan for municipal annexation. Prepared for the annexation of the southwest B Bloomington Annexation Area depicted in exhibit A to ordinance seventeen ten. Fiscal plan five point O is an updated version of the fiscal plan last updated by the council on May nineteen, twenty twenty one. And outlines the proposed plans for the extension of capital and non capital services in the area.
Thank you very much. I do believe that administration. Have no presentation. Do we have any questions on this resolution from council? Okay, thank you. Seeing none. I do believe we have more resolutions for second reading tonight. Councilmember Flaherty.
President, I move that resolution twenty one dash thirty be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved the second, that resolution twenty one dash thirty be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. I'm sorry, before we get there, will the clerk please call the roll? You're muted. Yeah, I got too much stuff too, yeah.
Yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Member Sandberg? Rollo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarker?
Yes.
Scambolory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been properly moved the second that resolution twenty one dash thirty be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Resolution twenty one thirty, updating resolution seventeen eighteen and twenty one eleven. An updated fiscal plan and policy resolution for annexing contiguous territory to the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana. Southwest C Bloomington Annexation Area. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution adopts the updated fiscal plan for municipal annexation. Prepared for the annexation of the southwest C Bloomington Annexation Area depicted in exhibit A to ordinance seventeen eleven. Fiscal plan five point O is an updated version of the fiscal plan last adopted by the council on May nineteen, twenty twenty one. And outlines the proposed plans for the extension of capital and non capital services in this area.
Thank you very much. I do believe we have more resolutions for second reading tonight.
Probably just double check if any members have questions.
You're absolutely right. I'm sorry, I just anticipated the wrong thing. Do we have any council member questions? After no administrator presentation? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Seeing none, I do believe we have more resolutions for second reading tonight.
I move it resolution twenty one dash thirty one be introduced and read by.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved the second, the resolution twenty one dash thirty one be introduced and read by clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Council, Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rollo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarker?
Yes.
Scambolory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved the second, the ordinance, I'm sorry, resolution twenty one dash thirty one be introduced. By title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Resolution twenty one thirty one, updating resolution seventeen nineteen and twenty one twelve. An updated fiscal plan and policy resolution for annexing contiguous territory. To the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, southeast Bloomington Annexation Area. An updated fiscal plan and policy resolution for annexing contiguous territory to the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, Southeast Bloomington Annexation Area. The synopsis is as follows, this resolution adopts the updated fiscal plan for municipal annexation. Prepared for the annexation of the Southeast Bloomington Annexation Area depicted in Exhibit A to Ordinance seventeen twelve as amended. Fiscal Plan five point oh is an updated version of the fiscal plan last adopted by the council on May nineteen, twenty twenty one. And outlines the proposed plans for the extension of capital and non capital services in this area.
Thank you very much, I'm just watching hand signals, so I didn't know. Okay, do we have any questions from council? Okay, seeing none, I do believe we have more resolutions for second reading tonight.
Yes, Mr. President, a quick double check on my part, that was number thirty one, correct? Thank you, clerk.
Thirty one.
Okay.
Yes.
And with that, I'd like to move the resolution twenty one dash thirty two be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Thank you, it's been properly moved in second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Okay, Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarker?
Yes.
Scambolory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty? Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Smith?
Yes.